All right, call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Flag's over here. I'll look it up so I know where to look. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Those of you watching at home, I'd like to welcome you to the key room in the high school. This is going to be our new location for school committee meetings. Take advantage of this nice room over here and free up some space at the elementary school for Mrs. Priestley to come up with other activities over there. We're going to start with recognitions.
All right, thank you, Karen. So we have some shout-outs tonight. I don't need four recognitions, but I want to thank some people for their efforts these last few weeks at both schools. I want to start off by thanking Trish Tarantino and Gabby Rogers for organizing Coco with Cops, an event that we had last week where we had over 20 different police officers who worked with some of our youngest students in building holiday crafts. So thank you for the two of those members for planning and for delivering another great event at the elementary school. I want to thank Donna Holmes and her team for our senior citizen luncheon, which we held again last week. This is just one of many of our activities that we've had this year trying to bridge the school district and our schools with our community. So we want to thank Donna and thank all the members of the community who showed up for a nice turkey and gravy luncheon. I want to thank Caitlin Malone and the Stuko Ebor, especially Jake Sodjovic, Libia Grande and Shannon Tumi for a fantastic Christmas in North Quookfield event on Saturday. This event was held at the elementary school from 12 to 2:00, and we had another great turnout. Kids could get their pictures taken with Santa Claus, a lot of crafts and activities for our youngest students to partake in. So I want to thank Stuko, Miss Malone, for all their amazing efforts once again. And those are all my shout-outs for tonight.
Shout-out to Santa Claus, too, for touring the town on the fire truck yesterday, for those of you guys that see that. They looked like they extended the loop this year. The fire department went all around, so they got, they hit some good coverage this year. Anyone else have any recognitions? All right. Move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes are from our last meeting, which was... You've got to make it official.
November 21st.
Remember, so we're approving the minutes from November 21st, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 21st, 2022, school committee meeting.
One second.
All right, any discussion, anything we need to talk about now? These minutes are so detailed. All right, all in favor of approving minutes? All right, unanimous? Public participation? All right. If anyone watching at home wants to come to these meetings, we are now at the high school, just keep that in mind. We do have a sign on the door over there, so if anyone did come to the wrong building, they were directed over in this direction. Now, an exciting one, Washington DC trip update.
Okay, so I kind of wanted to come tonight to thank all of the people who are contributing to make this trip happen. Family, friends, and so many community members are making donations that are just astounding to me. And it's pretty much the only way we can go. So I am free to answer any questions. I know Mr. McCormick gave you a handout of some of the details. What has changed is we're up to 24 students, so we gained a student today. He's officially registered for the trip. There's only a couple more weeks to sign up, so I should have, you know, all of the final details in maybe two weeks after Christmas. But between all of the fundraising that the kids have been doing, the support, the donations, it's just a wonderful opportunity for our kids. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we will definitely keep informed as to our progress. And if anyone wants to make donations, please make your check out to NBHS, put Washington DC in the memo, send it to the high school. We will put it in the fund and get it into the students' accounts. So just, I guess that's it.
How close are you to the goal?
We're not close right now. We're still pretty far away. The, there are a lot of parents who are making payments without fundraising. We have two students who have totally paid for their trip by fundraising. We have a scholarship student. I applied for a Rhodes Scholarship. It's a national organization that thinks that kids should travel and have these opportunities. So one of our students got a $400 scholarship, and that paid off their trip, which is very nice. And that student actually is fundraising for spending money now. So that is also available to the kids if they need to fundraise or they're spending money, they can do that.
When do you have, what's the deadline for?
It's the end of February, but it can be extended for special circumstances. So we can actually, in very special circumstances, you can even pay after the trip. So, not the whole group, but, you know, a few. So, but that, we didn't have to do that last year, and I don't expect those to have to do it this year either, so. We'll just keep going. And I know we have a parent, they'll be a fundraiser at the end of January. They, I haven't put in the paperwork yet, but they want to run a cornhole tournament. So that is exciting to me because it's a parent-run fundraiser, and we just keep plugging away at everything, so.
So we'll have more updates on that.
Oh, yes.
Next meeting, we'll get.
Sure. Yes, well, the next meeting, all our numbers should be final. Everything, you know, I still have a couple students waiting in the wings that may sign on. We'll see. But, and I have some, some other donations coming in that I know about, so that's pretty exciting, too.
When is the actual trip?
It is April 25th through 28th.
Well, thank you for everything that you're doing to make it possible.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other question, Chris? Got a question?
No, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for the kids and thanks for everything that you're doing. It's exciting.
All right, speaking of students, Olivia, you ready with your student representative report?
I am, thank you. We have a couple events that are, either we just recently had or are still going on. We've got, we, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, we had our Christmas in NBE last Saturday. It was our biggest and most popular event of the year. It went extremely well. We had tons of games and prizes and raffles and concessions that were all free to the community. We had a lot of kids come, saw a lot of bright, smiling faces, took pictures with Santa. And I just wanted to mention that without help from Tabby LeBlanc, this event would not have been possible, and the grants from the cultural committee from the town, so thank you to them. We recently had the first few basketball games and the start of Student Council runs concessions for basketball every year, and that will continue through the basketball season at all home basketball games. We had our Giving Turkey, which has turned into our Giving Tree, and it's held, Giving Turkey was through November, and our Giving Tree is through till the end of this week. We were taking donations for toys, for Toys for Tots, and students were encouraged to buy those items. And at the end of the event, the grade of the most items donated will be receiving Spirit Week points. And our chairs for this event were Bella Oregan and Kaylee McPartland. We have, this week is our Holiday Spirit Week. Today was Flannel Day, tomorrow is Holiday Movie Character Day, Wednesday's Red and Green, Tuesday is New Year's Eve Day, and Friday is our Polar Express Pajama Day. And Friday is also our Winter Sports Pep Rally. And then we have a couple conferences and field trips more towards the spring. We have our Hyannis Annual Conference on March 8th to the 11th. Our Spring Conference is April 13th at West Boylston, and if any of those events have not had trip proposals turned in, they will be turned in soon. And as always, our social media is Instagram and Facebook at NBStuko. We invite you to follow those to get updates on our activities and different events that we'll be doing. And our Student Council meetings are always open to the community and are there typically every other Monday in this room, so please feel free to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. What movie character are you going as tomorrow?
I'm going as Rudolph the Friend who's running.
You guys have any other questions, or? All right, school committee reports. Do you have anything? I don't have anything right now. Okay, we did, we, Ronza here, and we, tomorrow night at the Select Board meeting, they will be appointing a replacement school board member, so. More to come, we'll introduce the new member next month, at next month's meeting, and we'll have a reorganization of the committee at that point as well, to make sure everyone's got a seat and so on, so stay tuned in this room in January. Financial reports.
All right, I've attached the most recent vendor awards of your appraisal. Five or six pages. Are there any questions?
I signed them, so I didn't want you to have questions.
Yeah, I know you did. You have questions.
She do.
I signed them.
All right. Superintendent's report.
All right, so a few things to discuss tonight before we have two presentations this evening from Dr. Spizito and Ms. Priestley. I want to announce or share with the committee and the public that North Quookfield Public Schools was awarded a $100,000 IBAC grant. This grant will be used to perform essentially a technology refresh for both schools in making our energy use safer, more reliable, more efficient. So this will begin late January, and will run over the course of a year. So we're excited to be able to give this, our buildings a refresh that they, they very desperately need. So this money will be spent wisely and to make that upgrade. As I mentioned in my opening shout-outs, we hosted a senior citizen luncheon. I just want to emphasize again, this is part of our, our kind of ongoing work with the community. We have a monthly community outreach meeting, coalition if you will, that meets at the elementary school to discuss different events and ways that we can work and meet together. And this was just the latest installment of that. This past Friday, we had an early release day for our students. Our staff members, both our teachers and our paraprofessionals, worked with our North Quookfield Police Department on our Alice Intruder Training. This two-hour training took place here at the high school, and we ran through three different scenarios to better educate and bring more awareness for our staff if, in fact, we ever are faced with an emergency or an intruder in one of our school buildings. As I said to our staff on the first day of school during our PD, this is one of, this is a three-part kind of series, if you will. We did an overview back in August for the entire staff. The second training on Friday was more of a hands-on training for our staff members to kind of go through scenarios. And then our third part of this will be with our students, and that would be informational to discuss with our students what they will do with their teachers in the case of, in the event of emergency. So that will be coming up this year, and we'll be working with the police department on that as well. Recently, our high school counseling staff, both our school council and adjustment council, worked with Unique Potential. We worked with this consulting firm last year, and this is essentially to develop or to kind of phase back in our SEL advisory program for our middle and high school students. We are presenting to our full staff in January with Dr. Gould and the two counselors, and then in February, we're rolling this program back out, so our students will have more exploration with college and career readiness, and also kind of doing that through an SEL lens, if you will, so that they will be learning how to kind of build capacity with some of their interpersonal skills while looking at college and career choices. Since early fall, Ms. Priestley and I have attended five different trainings put on by the state, which is, which they're entitled, Racial Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, or the Ready Initiative. We have worked as, with a cohort of superintendents, principals, DEI directors, and retired superintendents who are around the Commonwealth, to really look at how we're going to be tackling this issue and working with our students and our staff, not only this year, but for years to come. And we're very excited about what will be done so far. We are kind of an offshoot of that cohort. We are looking at doing an equity audit with our DUCIA team, which will then do for the entire staff, the entire district. And then we have a planning for upcoming PD Day on January 17th with Karen Thomason, who works for MASSS and the Rides Initiative. They will be helping us, supporting us, and continuing this conversation about belonging and racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. So we're excited for their, their help and their support, and we're very excited to bring this information to the staff. That's my report. I did attach to your, your Pakistan, I kind of the, the overview of the IBAC grant, so you can take a look at that and see exactly what technology they're, they're referring to.
I have a quick question on one of these. On the Alice training, you mentioned local law enforcement.
Yes.
Well, has there been any, have you had any discussions with them about the need or the possibility of doing a school resource officer in shared buildings, or?
You know, we, we haven't, and I will, I will say that I think the North Quookfield has a fantastic relationship with our police department. As you know, Chief Smith is pretty much here every morning, we're kind of greeting families, and whenever we need a police officer for any reason, they're here within minutes. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of conversation around the, the use of an SRO in a school building, and I think with what we have right now, and basically, they're always around. I don't know if we need a full-time SRO, but I, but I appreciate all the efforts and all the work that PD has, you know, shown us over the last couple of years.
I was just curious, because I know some, you know, some school districts do still do have them and some don't, so.
Right, yeah.
As to the reasoning, I know obviously there's financial considerations there, but.
There's that, there's that, but like I said, I think that.
But to me, that's like at the end of the list, obviously.
Yeah, that's at the end of the list. I think that, you know, the, a big talking point now, if you follow the news, there's been some conversations, Worcester just changed their law for an SRO. Sometimes an SRO, I think they, we really want to handle our, our issues internally as much as possible and kind of resolve those concerns through peer mediation as much as possible. But like I said, we've had a great relationship with our PD, and that will continue.
I have a question about the community outreach, the senior luncheon.
Yeah.
Where do people learn more about this? Where, where can people go to?
Which part? About the luncheon, or?
Well, you said there's monthly, monthly meetings. Is it open to the public? Is it?
It is, yeah. And we, we started these back in early September, and it was after our National Night Out event, and we basically invited all the members of that committee and of all the other groups in town that are working to make North Quookfield a better place. And so we started with that core, like a dozen or so, it's blossomed to about 25 or 30 people. And we have a handful that show up in person, and we have, most people do show up virtually. What I do is I send out that, that invite to all the members that have been coming, but I, actually, I think that now that they've stationed, I should probably post it on our webpage, too.
Yeah, I think the more we can message it, you're going to have more people than you can handle. I think people are starting to get a lot more involved.
Yeah, you know, we are, we do some really great stuff, and we are involved right now with Quayback Hills and looking at some, some grant funding for some, we have a rehabilitation to be, so we're working on that.
Anyone else? Is there any other question? All right, cool. Thank you for that report. And let's go into the, we're going to do the PBIS presentation first, is that?
Sure.
Should we stand here?
Yeah, I'm just thinking this.
And sort of face the camera and slip in here? I feel like this is our best vantage point.
As quick as we can.
Sorry, yeah.
Well, actually, I can see a perfectly fine Europe.
It wasn't, I'm sorry.
I did, I did. It's not, it's not there.
Oh, it's up. It's just the projector. The projector time's out.
The first committee meeting in this room, we're working out the kinks.
My first year, I taught in this room with that projector, so I sympathize. All of the struggles right now.
Looks like it's ready to take off.
Yeah.
He's loud.
We always have issues with that first when we have someone.
Oh, that's like, see me.
Well, there's a lot less chords on the floor in this room, though. Say that.
It's our time to judge every room differently.
How many chords have we placed?
It's on. It says computer one.
If all is feels, you can just handbrake.
Why are we? Is it covered?
Can't reach the.
It's like the coffee is at school.
Dr. Gould, you're going to have to boost me up so I can, you can hold it around.
No, he's pretty tall, maybe he'll reach that standing on the desk.
Here we go.
Good? Okay.
Let's go back. Okay. So we are presenting, Mrs. Macklewitz and myself, adjustment counselor, I'm a school principal, we are presenting sort of an overview history of PBIS at NBEs, so acronyms, we'll explain later. So PBIS is an acronym that stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. It's the behavior part of the multi-tiered system of supports, which is something you probably hear MTSS in education lingo a lot. You can go to the next slide. So the first graphic here is just to explain the umbrella of MTSS, so MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, how we're supporting our students academically, behaviorally, and socially. You can go to the next one, we're going to explain the tiers. So within the MTSS framework, we're just focusing on the behavioral circle, which is, I think, in teal on the graphic. We're going to be explaining the difference between tier one, tier two, and tier three, so I'm going to have, ask Mrs. Mack to kind of just go over what that means.
Sure. So with the three different tiers, tier one is our school-wide interventions that might include something like our classroom environments, posting our PBIS expectations on all the walls, things that every student gets explicit teaching of those, those expectations in that nature. Every student gets that. And with the PBIS theory and the model, the hope would be that 80% of our students are going to respond to those interventions, behaviorally, and be successful. So when we get into tier two, we're looking at probably a smaller percentage, 50% of our students that might need a little bit of extra support. And so this might look like if the entire student body was explicitly taught some social skill, some behavioral skill, these students, this 50%, might need a small group to kind of reinforce that skill or practice that skill a little bit more. And then you get into our tier three students. Those are our students who have specific team members with potentially a specific behavior plan to help support behavior, maladaptive behaviors in a challenging behavior that they may be engaging with within the school. Sure, thank you.
So keeping that information about the tiers in mind, just a little bit of history of PBIS at our school. So previous administration in 2017 implemented the first acknowledgement system, where we were going to acknowledge positive student behaviors. And at the time, it was giving marbles to a jar every time a student did something that was, that met expected behaviors. Sophia's nodding her head because she remembers marbles. In my class, in fact, we had a jar. And that marble jar would fill up, and then the student, the class would earn a reward. So it's really acknowledging positive behaviors. That transitioned into Starbucks, which are sort of another type of token. In the fall of 2020, which was my second year as principal, our adjustment counselor at the time had applied for the PBIS Academy, which was a partnership between DESI and Yukon. And it was these three-year academies that you could sign up for to learn more about implementing PBIS at the tier one, tier two, and tier three levels. So we continued that in 2021, 22, in our, in our second year of the tier one. So again, just focusing on all students, how to make sure that we were explicitly teaching what we expected students to do in our school. And then this year, we are continuing in our third year of the tier one academies. This is our last year with the team that we've been with, but we also applied for the first year with the tier two support. So that, so we're kind of doing both of those simultaneously. So the first year, just to kind of go into a little bit more depth on what that looked like, so this was the 2021 school year. We really focused on staff training, so we, we had a school-wide behavior matrix, what our expected behaviors looked like in the cafeteria, in the hallways, out at recess, on the bus. So we talked about how to teach those explicitly at the classroom level, so teachers would take their students to those locations and teach those. Reteaching when students didn't meet the expected behavior, so kind of revisiting, okay, what is expected behavior in the cafeteria look like? Let's go through that again, especially after breaks, winter break, February, April, et cetera. We focused on providing behavior-specific praise, so yes, the kids love earning Starbucks, but we also want to make sure that we're praising the specific behaviors that we're seeing and using our acknowledgement system appropriately. At the end of the year, and at the end of every year, as you'll see, we collect our fidelity data, which basically means to what extent are we doing this with fidelity. So we're scored by the people, the coaches through the academy on how much our staff understands the school-wide expectations, how much our students understand the school-wide expectations, and we're given a rating. So the next slide will show you that data. So in our first year, we were at 50% fidelity. Now, the academy says that 80% or higher is doing it with fidelity. So we weren't there yet, but it was, again, it was our first year. You can break down the data on the next graph here. So this is just a subscale, so you can see where we were really working with fidelity and where we weren't. So teams, we had our teams implemented pretty well, our implementation of it, so that was given to gauge your specific praise using the Starbucks. And then our evaluation was using data to inform changes for the next year, which was actually a lot higher because we were really looking at data at that time. I'm going to let Mrs. Mack speak to our second year with the tier one.
Sure. So second year, speaking of data, because PBIS is very highly data-driven, we wanted to find a place to aggregate all that data that we were collecting and have one central location for all of that. So we began implementing what they call SWISS. It's a PBIS program where teachers are, and staff are able to document what we would either consider a minor behavior or a major behavior. Minor behavior might be disruption of the classroom, and a major behavior might be something that requires principal assistance. And we were able to also develop our specific classroom matrices. So we had the large matrices, which was school-wide expectations, but each classroom was a little different, has different routines, and we had them, our teachers, working on specific classroom matrices for their classrooms. What's nice about the SWISS program, about our ability to use that, was that we were able to aggregate the data, and you can basically pull up any report that you would like to find. If you would like to find how many minor behaviors are happening on Monday, you can pull that and look at it by week. You can pull major behaviors versus minor behaviors by student. You can pull it by classroom or location of the school. So we're able to utilize that data in a much more data-driven way with our decision-making. That was weird when you say that, but this, our decision, data-driven decision-making. And one of the examples that we were able to use is we made some changes to our recess schedule based upon the SWISS data that we were. based upon the SWISS data that we were able to pull. We were noticing some trends with recess, and so we switched that up. And we've had some pretty good data that supports it was a positive change on the base.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've noticed that our changes to recess this year have resulted in far less referrals than we had last year, which is nice. We collected our fidelity data, so if you want to just speak a little bit to the difference in what we saw. I just want to point out that there is a column that I deleted in between the two because we did a self-assessment, we were a little generous with ourselves. So I... It's invalid. So I took that out, just in case you were wondering why there's missing data there, that's the reason. So we're gonna look at what's here because that was evaluated by an objective set of eyes.
So, you know, the first column was the data that was taken that first year. The second year was done. We have a PBIS coach who we work with that comes and helps us walk through the T F I, which is what we're using here to identify our fidelity and implementation. And so it looks like that we grew over that second year in our ability to implement fidelity. And that might include the team that we had in place and the consistency around that team, our ability to evaluate ourselves, as well as utilization of that data.
And the next graphic shows sort of that breakdown, yeah. So we really excelled in the implementation piece because that, if you remember from the previous slide, the implementation... Oh, it's right there in green, was the lowest, and now it's the highest. So we really... When she came and she interviewed students and staff about, you know, what does STAR stand for? What are the expected behaviors? Students were really able to explain that out and to show that it's working. And so 80% were meeting fidelity in our tier one implementation. So we are in our third year of the tier one, so we are phasing out of the support from the coaches. We're gonna continue to refine and revise our progressive discipline system, so continuing to use SWISS and document those O D Rs accurately. One of the changes we made was that our team this year, which is all new, we have teachers on the team that have not been a part of the team before. Our team members have transitioned up to the tier two team with Mrs. Mack. They set their goal to define challenging behaviors. So what does disruption in the classroom look like? What does disrespect look like? And they did it at the K two level and then the three to six level, so... Because it could look a little different. We identified what interventions and supports are appropriate to implement when those behaviors occur. We, again, you know, using SWISS to document the fidelity and also to develop a consistent response to behavior. Every situation is different, and we try to take individual student needs into account, but we do want to make sure that students understand that they're in a process for consequences when behaviors occur. So that's... We've had some success with that. The last piece that we are looking to do, and we say this every year, and I think COVID did set us back a little bit, but is to increase that family and community engagement piece and really connect with our families to help them understand what PBIS is. As part of our presentation tonight, is to start to bridge that and move that forward. And Mrs. Mack's gonna speak a little bit about tier two because she's actually on the team that's the tier two that's moved up in year one this year.
So in tier two, the main focus and action stuff for us is to identify the students that might progress to that tier two, that's that 15% of the triangle, those students that might need a little bit of extra support. And so what we want to do is we want to do that a little more proactively and finding ways in doing that. So one of the things that we're looking to implement is a new screening tool, which is called the Sabers. It's a social, academic, and emotional behavior-based screener, which has been widely known and used in a number of different districts that are also implementing PBIS, with a lot of good fidelity and getting lots of positive support. So it's 16... I'm sorry, it's 19 questions that kind of covers all of areas for each student, which includes social, academic, and emotional behaviors. What's nice about the Sabers is that it not only tracks the externalizing behaviors, but also tracks the absence of behaviors and internalizing behaviors, which you might like... You might miss some of those behaviors or people that might need tier two support because it's internalizing and not necessarily getting an office referral or getting put into SWISS. The other piece... Oh, we're looking to hopefully pilot that through our S S T process and kind of see if the data is what we are hoping to get and what would be helpful, what we would think would be helpful as we look to roll it out as a universal screen. The other piece is developing a data decision rules and developing our data decision rules. What would we like to use as a flow chart to identify when students enter tier two or tier three and when they are able to exit out of those? And so this might include reviewing, you know, the implementation of tier one across settings, so those classroom matrices measuring those are implemented appropriately. It might also include, you know, looking at the SWISS data, such as like getting three minor referrals in a SWISS might result in a tier two referral and kind of doing a Sabers or doing other types of data point collection, which may include things such as, you know, attendance data and nurses' business. So that's kind of where we're at, and starting to kind of roll that out and getting some feedback on that.
So our fidelity data just... We're low now because we just started. We just started this work. This is year one, you know, we are winter of year one. So we're at 20, what is it, 7% fidelity for tier two. So we have hoped to grow through our team and our work this year. And again, we're only in year one, we've got three years of this work ahead of us, and we have some very talented staff on our team. So I'm looking forward to seeing the great things that they'll do. It was a lot of information, but I'll take any questions that you may have.
I think the information's great. That what are your plans to... You said this is a step one of sharing the information? Is this being... Would any other plans to share with families? I mean, so the way I look at this is, I mean, if there's a student with a behavior issue and this information's being spoken to their parent, great. What about the rest of... Like, what about the other 80% who are doing well? Do they know? Are those parents who know about this information? What are your plans to broadcast that out?
Absolutely, it's a great question. So yes, we are communicating with families on an individual basis, but we do want to bring this to, you know, our community at large. So some of the ideas that we generated last year were to have... So we used to do the Cakewalk and Ice Cream Social at the Back to School event. Now we just kind of do the Cakewalk. We titled the P T O, can we incorporate the Ice Cream Social to something where we bring the community in and have the Ice Cream Social, but also let's explain what PBIS is? What does STAR behavior look like at our school? Maybe what does STAR behavior look like at home? And kind of bridge that with that language and bring families into that conversation. So sort of having, you know, like a parent-student workshop, where the students really get to explain to their families what PBIS is and what STAR behavior is to their families. So that was, you know, doing it at an evening event was one idea. And then also having kind of an ongoing family and community engagement series, where, you know, monthly we had... I know last year we did some parent workshops where we invited families in to discuss different topics. There was cyberbullying, there was... Or some of the other topics that you covered.
Cyberbullying behavior within the home setting with I B C B A.
No, that's a... Yeah. And there were... Those were definitely two that we did. So continuing those would be a great next step. So we definitely have some ideas. And those were held both during the school day and also after school to accommodate different family schedules because we understand, you know, no one's available in the evening or in the afternoon in the day. So really open it up to...
I think it's great. I mean, I think that... I think what we're doing is awesome. I think you should just give credit for the work, is what I'm saying, you know, because...
Thank you.
We do hear, I hear out of the community a lot about what's going on with, you know, person X getting in trouble. Why are they still in the class? I mean, there's a lot of things that are happening that I don't think most parents know about. This is one of the challenges, so...
No, I appreciate that. And we definitely want to make sure that, you know, families are aware of our approach. Definitely putting more of this into our, you know, student handbook, getting that out to the families in any way we can so that they're aware.
So I have a question. Since you're doing all of this work, K through six, is it transitioning through the middle school into the high school? Because, you know, behaviors more can change as they development will change. So I didn't know if there was a continuum flowing into the high school or if the high school is going to have their own... Or do they have their own kind of...
Yeah, I think Mr. Reformat talked a little bit about it in his superintendent's report with the curriculum that they're gonna be implementing, starting when, back in January, right? This is gonna be working out to...
February.
Back in January and coming out in February. So I know that the adjustment counselors definitely talk on a regular basis and meet with Dr. Esposito. So bridging, you know, what they're doing at the junior year high school with what we're doing at the elementary school would definitely be a focus.
Because I'm just thinking they were already like conditioned to know a positive behavior and a negative behavior. It just would be, you know, something you would just, you know... It is, you know, even the same language. Because if you change the language, sometimes, somatically, the children are like, well, you know... But they will know how to weasel out. We should do...
Yeah, no, I think some of the conversations that we'll have, you know, at the leadership level and also, you know, our counselors will be able to communicate. We're fortunate that we have the proximity to do that.
No, it all sounds wonderful.
Yeah. I don't think by seventh grade, is it cool to get a Starbucks bill? That's probably part of it.
And it looks very different, right? So it's like, right?
I don't...
Yeah, but that's one of the concerns that I think a lot of high schools and middle schools do have when it comes to PBIS, is that it comes off that it's, you know, being very correct. Yeah, and it's not, it just looks different. But using the same language, using the same kind of setup.
Seems like there's the same opportunity for data-driven feedback to... I was struck by the comment about the recess, right? Being able to adjust recess and reduce the number of referrals. Is there, as this data is collected, and we're not the only school that's in this program, does that get shared? Are there like statewide trends they've observed or any sort of feedback like that that could possibly help a school that's just getting into it?
I think we're in a cohort, and we kind of share data amongst like other schools that are across the state. But I don't know that there's like a formal platform for that now.
Like Mrs. Mack said, we communicate with other districts that we've been in the academy with, and I hope to continue those partnerships even after we're not in the tier one academy anymore. We've been working very closely with the Holyoke Schools, for one, and just being able to see what other folks are experiencing. And there's a lot of similarities. We may have very different districts, they might look very different. There's a lot of the same struggles. So it's been helpful to see their data and share ours and make some decisions together and work with them, work for us, and that has been invaluable. But I don't know that there's a really a statewide, like a PBIS data platform. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Alright, Dr. Esposito, now it's time for your presentation.
Standing. I think it can stay probably up there. I think we're good. So good evening. Okay. So I'm here to talk about the tier focus monitoring and what this means and why it's important. The... So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does tier focus monitoring every three years, and we happen to be in group B. And essentially, what this means is this is their way of ensuring that we are in compliance with targeted standards. And it really looks at the processes and procedures of special education and our civil rights. And so it looks at the universal standards. And what the standards they're gonna look at, that we are in group B, are gonna be the licensure and professional development that we do as a district, the parent-community engagement. They're gonna be looking at our classroom observations, general oversight, time learning, and equal access. So Northbrook Field Falls in tier one. There's four tiers that they look at, and we happen to be in tier one. And it's based on different factors and different data points that they collect. And we are in the self-directed improvement area. And some of the data points that I pulled out were... There's compliance complaints that are problem resolution that they take to see if we have been, had any complaints put against our school or safety disciplines. They look at a lot of different components. They pull all those data points together and they look at how are those points impacting our student outcomes? And so we happen to be at tier one. So they take from that group and they identify areas that they're interested in looking at. So that's... That's now. So they're gonna take from special education. They're basing it on our two laws, federal and state. So the federal is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act from 2004. And then our civil rights, I mean, I'm sorry, our Special Regulations 603, C M R 28. And then the civil rights, there's quite a few. So they're looking at Title VI, which is our discrimination, the Equal Educational Opportunities Act, which is our equal equity and access. They're looking at Title IX, which is the harassment and bullying, Section 504, which is the protection of rights for students with disabilities. They're looking at Title II, which is that licensure that we need to ensure our staff are licensed. It's looking at the hind on learning and any other requirements under federal and state laws that they deem is appropriate, that they will go ahead and ensure that we are following. So the process as it has, as that we have been following is our self-assessment. So back in the spring of last year, they gave us a list of the areas in special education that they were going to ask us to do our self-assessment and then areas in civil rights that they wanted us to look at. So they presented us with a list, and our job was to do our own internal self-assessment. So we went ahead and we had to look and identify and show evidence that we were doing what we say we were doing. And if we found that we weren't doing it, it gave us a chance to make corrections. That was all submitted back in April of last year. They then come in January, and I'll explain all of what that will look like. But they're gonna interview and they're gonna do, look at our parent advisory, which we don't have a very active one right now, but we're still working hard, as I've said in every report. And they're gonna tour our building, and then if, based on all of that, they're gonna do a continuous improvement monitoring plan that we would put together. So on the date that they come, and they're gonna come on the 10th, and then they'll come again on the 11th of January. They're going to interview pre-selected staff, which will typically be myself, Mr. Reformat, and someone from our C P A. They will look at all of the spaces in the building. So I will walk with Dr. Gould and Ms. Creasly, and they will want to see every aspect of our school, every program that we have, any of our comp spaces. They'll want to look at our E L classroom, our O T, nurses' spaces, or any of the spaces or programs that we have in our schools. And then they'll want to meet with a parent. They may take a look at our files. They will let me know if there's a special education file that may be of interest to them. They may ask me to pull a file. And then they will have an exit meeting with the administration on January 11. And they will give us a preliminary, you know, discussion of, you know, discussion points. This is what we saw, this is what we liked. And then it will be probably a half an hour, and then they will leave, and then they will write up a report for us. So between now and the time that they come, I'm sending them any other additional information that they have requested. We will have tomorrow a Zoom orientation with the Department of Education, one of the chairs. And it will be on Zoom, and Mr. Reformat's going to send out the flyer again. And that will, the Zoom link is on that flyer. And I will be on that with him from 6:00 to 6:45. And then on January 4th, I will be doing a basic rights training for families. And that will go out in a flyer before the end of this week. And that will also have the Google Meet link. So that is the tier focus monitoring. Lot of paperwork, but good information in paperwork because it does hold us in compliance and ensures that we're doing right by our kids. Any questions?
A question. So this, because you're on tier one, which you said was the self-directed improvement. So we did a self-assessment and picked out areas that needed improvement. Is that what it was?
They give us areas.
So they gave that, you then assessed those...
Correct.
And now they're gonna come back and see whether...
Whether they're actually being done.
Okay, so they laid out what needed to be worked on, and then it was up to us to get it. Now they're coming back to evaluate this. Is it just what's going on?
Absolutely, yes. Any questions? No. Okay, thank you so much.
They worked on trying to get the word out more for the parent...
Please.
The parent council.
Yes, we do, we do want, as I've said in every meeting I've been here, we want an active C P A. We would love to get things moving, and I would love to have them come and talk with you. That is part of the, that's the whole premise of a C P A, is to be involved and work with school people as well. So I'm hopeful. It's gonna happen, it's just not happening yet. So I'm hopeful, it's going to happen, it's just not happening yet. Thank you.
All right. Administrators' reports. Dr. Gould, you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you. I want to say, great job, ladies, wonderful job, well done. At the high school, it's been an exciting past month. We, we're in full anticipation of the winter season, we continue to partner with community members for the benefit of our students. Under district leadership, the high school engages management issues while promoting teaching as well as learning. The events of community outreach, we hosted the Technology Learn Center Trade School to provide post-graduation, a post-graduation career pathway for our current students who are aiming to graduate. Next, the senior week is an ongoing recognition program, which is really exciting, they get to name a song, the crown, many of you probably know it better than I do, but it really was, I was approached by a student about a month ago to say, can you reenact this? And I said, yeah, we can reinitiate it, and I was like, yeah, let's look at this, that's exciting. The high school in collaboration with Brendan Avery dedicated a showcase down on the lower level of the school to Northbrook Field history items. There's a 1955 Letterman sweater, and when Mr. McCormick hosted the breakfast for senior citizens this past week, we brought them over there and they were all excited, they were like, I know this person, I know that person, so it makes a difference, and the students were there too to see, so it came alive, it was exciting. So that was the senior citizen breakfast, this, on December 13th. We also, earlier this past month, hosted the winter sports meeting with coaches and parents, so parents could meet their children's coaches on November 28th. The cheerleading squad had trials led by Ms. Rachel Smith DeSharnes, and the basketball teams were formed, we have a middle school boys' basketball team coached by Ms. Hanson, we have a varsity boys' basketball, Mr. Kenon stepped up with his wealth of experience in basketball to coach after our previous coach had an opportunity elsewhere but resigned two weeks before the season started. And then Miss Malone's doing a great job, being the most veteran coach out there, and it's exciting, and I remember her, and she remembers me when she was in middle school playing basketball when I was coaching here, that was very cool, and it's exciting to see that happen. Also, I discovered our pep band, Mr. Blumenthal has a handful of students who are participating in the pep band, and if you get a chance, please come to the basketball games, because that school spirit is tangible and alive and it's exciting, it's a throwback. I challenged a student who I was concerned about our attendance, wonderful kid, Bella Oregan, and I said, if you get, if you have a month of perfect attendance, you'll get a pizza on me, but come and tell me, and she helped me accountable, and she got a pepperoni pizza, and then she went on to give all the slices away to her classmates. So it was pretty cool. But I was, I'm very proud of Bella, she did a great job. And then we're hosting a winter holiday concert tomorrow, I hope you get a chance to go. Also, our PD department's partnering up with Sergeant Dutra of the Massachusetts Army National Guard to have students participate on a voluntary basis of guard fit exercise program, and we're working with that, and that'll be tomorrow as well. In terms of management, I want to give a lot of credit to the central office for helping us find a reasonable price to repurchase and touch up our floor, it looks like new, so thank you for that, and it's a much safer floor today than it was, and as Mr. McCormick spoke of, this past Friday, it was a half-day, and we had Alice training, and it went a long way, and it was really a good exercise and training opportunity. Teaching and learning, peer tutoring in mathematics is ongoing here at the high school. I give a lot of credit to Courtney Crowley for helping us with that, and she's leading that up. Ms. Pellicia is also trying to enlist other student volunteers, so that's exciting. The seventh, eighth, seventh and eighth graders as well as ninth graders will be attending the Christmas Carol at the Hainover Theater on December 22nd. We have completed the MAP testing, round one, and have completed the MAP testing makeups, and we plan and we aim to do a second round, almost like a post-test, in late January of MAP testing. And then the high school faculty continue to accommodate planning time to unpack the standards and articulate our curriculum. So that's where the high school's at, and again, thank you for your support.
Is there a calendar for like winter sports games and, I know there is online, like there's some site online that does them, but it's not very easy.
You can literally go, you can do anything from, literally, if you Google it, Northbrook Field, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, you can do that, match preps on there.
Right.
You'd have any number of them.
Yep.
But right now, the name escapes me.
Arbor.
Arbor Sports, it's an app, you can get it on your phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Next home game I think I saw on the wall out there is January 10? I think I saw on the wall out there, the next home game was January 10.
Yes.
Or they're away the next two games, I was, I found the little, I found the study posted out there.
They're in Millis, tonight, the girls are going to, went to Blackstone, they play at five. Thursday, the boys are going to Millis, and they're playing at five as well. So that, those are the next media games, away games, they've had two home games, and they've done very well, the boys, the girls are 1-1, and the boys are 2-0, and they've done very well. And Millis is somewhat similar to Northbrook Field, it's an Eastern Mass, but they have an elementary school on the same campus as the high school, so it's a good matchup, and I'm familiar with them, I coached against them, my son plays Metro West years ago, and I think it's a good matchup for us. Mr. Kenon already has the scouting report, so I'm excited, it's a prospect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I give a brief overview?
Sure, I don't have my report in front of me, because my phone doesn't work like here, but I.
Do you want to go over it?
Well, sure, but I did want to just reiterate, the Cocoa Tops event, which was Trish Tarantino and Gabby Rogers absolutely 100% coordinated that beautifully, they do that every year, and just so grateful for them, we had, I believe, 20?
Twenty-three.
Three officers that came from all different departments. I shared the pictures on social media, they have since been shared by some of the departments around the state to their Facebook pages, it's been really nice to see, so just an awesome community event. I did write that I wanted to recognize Northbrook Field Savings Bank for getting the banking, the student banking back at Northbrook Field Elementary, we haven't had that since COVID, so that's back this year. We have Spirit Week going on this week, thank you to the PTO for all of their hard work, they also have a door decorating contest going on, which is really exciting. Like Dr. Gould said, our staff at the elementary school is also working to unpack standards, looking at, you know, documenting curriculum vertically, as well as working grid-level teams, so that's awesome. Mrs. Mack referenced SST earlier, it was an occasion with a lot of acronyms, but I wanted to acknowledge our student success team for their work in continuing to refine our process in identifying students who need those multi-tier systems supports in academics or with behavior or with social emotional support. We have a really strong team, as we did last year, so that work continues. That's pretty much it, any questions? Thank you.
Heard about the Friday program, the Fridays?
Oh, yeah, so part of our PBIS is at the upper levels, we really wanted to acknowledge the students who have been doing a great job with meeting those expectations, so in fifth and sixth grade, we have our Fun Fridays, where they get to spend, you know, 15 minutes in the gym at the end of the day, Friday students who showed expected behaviors all week, and that's been going really well, so we're actually going to extend that into our fourth grade, because the fourth grade heard about that, and they thought that would work really well for their students as well, so it's spreading, it's growing, it's amazing. Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Do not have anything specific?
Nothing else, she shared everything.
You're good with numbers, yeah. I meant that's taking up quite a bit of your time getting ready for that.
Yes.
And the staff are just doing wonders, they're working extremely hard, especially this time of year.
All right, we have an old business, exit survey policy, which we'll deal with more next month, we'll continue to keep that on here, we'll follow up. That kind of flows into policy, I don't think we have any other new policy issues on the table at this point.
Well, I did add the last four pages of your packet, just wanted to take a look at that. So this is, as Dr. Spizito mentioned, you know, we're looking at our policy or civil rights and kind of how we support all of our different groups of students. This is some new language that I want to kind of update into our student handbooks, the equal education, our educational equity artist, the equal education organization, the homeless students from Kinnevento, and then we also have two new pieces that I would like to add, it's the educational opportunities for children in foster care, and then the education opportunity for military children. And these are all put out by the MAS, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, so you really just take this language and you embed it into your, into your handbooks, and we like to make these additions. Like I said, two of these need to be updated, and the last two are brand-new pieces that we'd like to add as soon as possible.
Is this something that we can, I don't know, we don't have written down, it's having a vote for, can we look at this and we can revisit it and vote it in next week?
Sure, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Is there anything, is there anything pressing right now where this policy is coming into play, or is it?
No, but I think it was timely because we were looking at all of our policies around supporting students with our upcoming audit and upcoming site visit, so we wanted to make sure that we were looking at everything, and this is part of that.
Okay, so let's put that, we'll put that on the agenda for next month, and we can discuss it.
For a vote?
Yeah, we'll put it up for a vote. You guys go with that, yes?
Yes.
Tell us.
I read through that, but I interpreted it as.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It didn't seem, nothing jumped out.
No, a lot of it is, it's just nuances with the language, but it's a lot of the same.
All right. Any other new business? Do we have any need for an executive session this evening?
Nope.
I don't believe we do. All right, so, make a motion to adjourn? All right.
And I will second that.
All in favor? All right, thank you everyone, have a good holiday season.
Holidays.
Yes.